Hey, everybody. I'm with my, I can say now, long time friend. Yeah, I can actually say that. Dan Kalb, who is running for state senator and our great council member of District One in Oakland. Dan, thanks for joining us. How you doing?
My pleasure. Good to see you, Zeni. Hope you're doing well.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, it's, 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 I'm fine. First of all, let's cut to the chase. We've got now Warriors gone, Joe Laib said they were the first shooter drop. He didn't even say that with equivocation. He said, we're the first shooter drop. That was 2012. Then we lost the Raiders in 2019. And now we have the A's. What are your thoughts about what happened?
Just, just, I think the Warriors left in.
Oh, yeah, the Warriors left. Actually, I apologize. The Warriors.
Yeah, like sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, like that. Yeah.
Yeah, 2016.
Yeah, it took them a while to build their, their new park over there.
Yeah, it, yeah, it did. You're right. You're right. I think what I was reacting to was the fact that Lacob had just, when 2012, you know, they had all those hiccups. He had already called. He said, he didn't say, we might be the first shooter drop. He said, we're the first shooter drop.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the Warriors owners are from Southern California, most of them at least. You know, they're, they're the glitzy people. They think San Francisco is where the glitz is. They want their own, their own big arena they could own. You know, they didn't even ask us to negotiate. They just left. But I'm still a Warriors fan.
I want NBA team. That's the most. I want us to have our own stuff, man.
Well, we're trying to work on getting a WNBA team.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll see.
Yeah. What are your thoughts about what's, what happened with the A's?
Yeah, you know, I've said this before to others. If the people of Nevada or the elected leaders of Nevada want to accept a bad deal and in order for them to get some baseball team, that's their decision. I have no control over that. But the A's know that if they want to, you know, turn around and come back here and talk to us and finalize a deal here, that we would welcome the opportunity to keep the A's somewhere in Oakland. And it could happen if they want it to happen. Unfortunately, the, the owners or the main owners of the A's don't seem to care about the cities they're in. This is a problem. You know, I think, I want, I want to say this because I want, I want major league commissioners, whether it's baseball or football or any other sports league to hear this. You know, the owners of big major league sports teams in all the major sports, they pretend to care about the cities they're in. And there probably are a few exceptions where the owners actually do care about the cities that they're in. But that's the rare exception. Mostly they're huge businessmen or groups of businessmen who all they care about is sucking up the money out of the city or out of their fans. And, and they're just in it for themselves or the, or the, or the glitz or something, a combination of the money and the glitz. You know, they're, they're trying to make a big profit at the expense of the cities that they're in, not to help the cities they're in. And that, and we've seen that here in Oakland, too. And so the current owners of the A's, they don't care about Oakland. They never did. We're, we're hoping, we were hoping for a long time that they would sell the team to some owner or group of owners that would actually care about Oakland and work with Oakland in a good faith legitimate way to keep the town, to keep the cities, to keep the ballpark in the town. I'm sorry, to keep the ball team in the town. And, you know, it looks like it's, that's less and less likely to happen. We're, you know, again, we're still here. We're not going anywhere. So they could change their minds. Something could fall through in, in, in the Vegas, but it doesn't look good right now.
Help me with something because I remember I dug up an interview I had with Dave Campbell, Oakland's president, about a year ago. And he told me that, Zeni, we've been negotiating with who pays for offsite infrastructure for, he said, the last four years. And as I recall, SB 293 Skinner was designed so that we could use tax increment financing to pay that. And then Mayor Schaaf told me on video, they didn't have the staff to actually do redevelopment well anymore. She said those words. So how much of this really is just our fault of not being on the same?
I don't think it's our fault at all. I, I think we've told them what we're willing to do. We made commitments in writing as well. And they kept on asking for more and more or kept on refusing to, to, to say, even to consider saying yes to certain. We, like, we had to spend months telling them they have to comply with our affordable housing law. Like, like, I mean, at a minimum. And it's like, well, why would we even have to say that for one, for one day? Of course you're going to comply with our law. You know, the question is, what, what more can we do beyond that and work with financing to get more than that? And like, we had to waste time with them. And that just shows the kind of people they are. It's like, they not only wanted to not, you know, negotiate things that are, you know, voluntary or optional, but they didn't want to do what's required. And so like, you've got to be kidding me. And so this has happened time and time again. Now, the one thing that was a big question mark, even to the very end, is to the extent, what extent would the county, Alameda County, be part of this tax increment financing district? And that was never, we never got to the point of answering that question because, because the A's decided to go, go somewhere else.
But I ask you, because I, I'm the, as, as the guy who actually told Dave, this was 4th of April, 2017, four o'clock in the afternoon, I said, Dave, you got to use taxing or financing. You gotta build affordable housing. You're not going to improve. And he goes, you can't use public money. And I proved, I showed him legislation, make a long story very short. Point is, I set the table for them to do that. And Libby and the rest, I'm sorry, Dan, they really slow rolled the whole thing. So how come we consistently put up these mirrors of like, oh, it's their fault or anything, rather than, and we're losing teams? Okay. Rather than what we used, what I went to Cal to do is to work for this city to build it, to have what we, you and I have enjoyed over hot dogs at the Coliseum and everything, you know?
Yeah, I, like I said, the city's negotiating team met with the A's on a regular basis. There were, there were, there were points in time for a period of a significant number of weeks where the city was willing to continue to meet and the A's were kind of like holding off, you know? And so, you know, so they, that you could easily point the finger at them for kind of slowing things down unnecessarily. So.
Yeah, and you're right. Did they tell you that, the A's tell you that they were actually paying for some of the people on the city's negotiating team?
Oh, yeah. What, what, they're paying for the planners and the, yeah.
Right.
That's not unusual for big developers to do that, you know?
I know, but my point is at some point, all right, the way I went, it was taught by Ezra Rapor, Weston Peace, redevelopment. You set up the tax increment financing zone first. That was the idea. You create your public financing authority, as they can now call it. That's the second idea. You then begin to tech, collect your tax increment monies so that you use 20% of it from administration. As I can remember Ezra saying this to me in my cubicle, now, make sure you back pack out 20% for administration. Okay, this is what we've done, said Dan. So now we're leaving it to developers who can, you know, if we have no money, there's no project. And we're talking about things that are, I apologize, I didn't mean to turn it this way because that's, I apologize, okay? But I just want to speed game here.
No, no, listen. The developers should pay for the, the additional staff you need to process, to process the, the, the whole negotiation and the whole set of plans that they want to put forward. It's, it's, it's very common in many cities for, for the biggest projects that take additional staff for the developer to pay for that. And that, that's, that's all that happened here. No, nothing unusual, nothing odd. And, and they agreed to that. And so that was fine. But what, what, what was problematic is they kept on saying, you know, no to things that we thought were very reasonable. And, you know, here, we had a mayor, the previous mayor and even the current mayor, but let's say the mayor Schaaf, who was mayor for a number of years during the time this was negotiated, attempted to be negotiated, right? And we, this, this mayor, as you know, was, wanted the Howard Terminal project to happen. She was a big cheerleader, a big advocate for it. Let's do it, let's do it, let's do it. And, and we couldn't even get, you know, a mayor who wants to happen to feel good about the proposal that they were offering. That's how bad their proposal was. That's how one-sided their proposal was. And that's how much we bent over backwards to say yes to things that we would normally not say yes to for a developer to give things to them in terms of money and so on, or the eventual money and so on. And that still wasn't enough. More and more and more. They kept asking for more and more and more, say, no, no, no. What we're, what we're trying to protect the city's general fund, certain backstops we needed to have, and they said no to. And we were, we were offering to do the incremental financing, the tax increment financing. We said yes to a lot of things, more than some cities would have done, and they still, you know, left us holding the bat.
But it's a huge question, though, my friend. For all that, why would they accept the mere 380 million, which is a pittance compared to what they're going to get from us, you know, going to Nevada? They didn't get more. They got less. Okay?
Yeah, I don't know what the whole deal is, both the state, well, there's, there's the state.
Secret. Now, my friend who worked on that deal will be on my show. We've talked almost now for six years, seven years. I gave him a lot of information. He introduced me to Jessica Colvin, the finance director. I told him, hey, you know, your bond issue for the Raiders, it's going to go south because your rate's too low. I wasn't paid for this. I, the reason I did it is because no one in Oakland was listening to me, Dan. So I gave them a warning and that's why they all called, talked to me, more so than anybody in Oakland. So I'm trying to explain, you know, where can we stop these games and mirrors and all finally work together, rather than working apart?
Yeah, well, listen, the city of Oakland wants to, wanted to work with the A's as we have and tried to for a number of years. We did things that they asked for, like state legislation, two different pieces of, two different bills, maybe three bills that they asked for, supported them. You know, gave, gave, gave in to what they asked for in terms of some financing for some infrastructure that they, that, that they would normally have to pay for. I mean, when there's an EIR and there's certain requirements under an EIR to do certain things that are, that are needed because of an impact of the project, normally the developer pays for that. And we agreed to pay for a lot of, through, through various non-A's money. That's, that's highly unusual. We, we went so far towards, well beyond the middle of negotiations, so far towards their side. They kept on asking for more. At some point we said, you know, like, come on, be serious here. And it, the message it tells us is they were never really serious, you know?
Well, here's my point, because I, you and I need to have a dinner over this. I'll buy, okay? Because I want to talk also about, first of all, you're right, you should be our next state senator. All right, yeah. Vote for this man, please. Okay? He'll be outstanding representative for the city of Oakland. Vote for him, okay? And you had a meeting about safe streets not too long ago, and now you have a plan. Safe streets for Oakland?
In the pedestrian safety work that the Oakland is doing? Yeah.
Yeah, could you talk about that for a little bit and then we'll kind of circle back to a couple of more A's questions I've got, you know?
Sure. And I can talk about other things as well at the state level. But, um, yeah, you know, pedestrian safety or pedestrian cyclist, bicyclist safety, making sure that our streets are safe for people to walk on, walk across, it's a bike on. This is absolutely critical. There are too many crashes, too many people speeding, too many people hurt and in some cases fatalities in Oakland, other cities as well, that, that are just unacceptable. So we supported state legislation to allow us to reduce the speed limit in a lot of, a lot of the corridors. We're working on that now, which will help somewhat. We need to engineer our streets to make them safer design-wise, so, so traffic will slow down and, and so people could see each other better. And so, so we're doing all the best practices we can do. I don't think we're doing them in enough streets. We need to do those things on more of our streets so to make them, to make more of them safer, but we are getting to some of them as soon as we can. And that's something that Oak Dot and the city and the public fully wants, and I want to prioritize that as we have. And so if we need more state funding to help do more streets, we should, we should look for that funding as well. Because, you know, pedestrian safety, you know, just the typical, you know, someone, a, a, a middle school child walking to school needs to make sure they're doing so in a, in a way that's safe for them to do so, so they won't get hit by a car. People crossing the street, turning on intersections, people, people making right turn on reds. We know that's, that's, that's perfectly illegal in California. It's also one of the, one of the most significant causes of injury, injury accidents of pedestrians.
Yep.
And so we have to do what we can to make our streets safer in terms of slowing traffic down, enforcing speeding laws, even if it means speed cameras in some places. And making sure that we have a, the streets that are safe for pedestrian cyclists, people walking to schools and wherever they're going. It should be as safe as possible. And that's a top priority for us.
No, so coming back to the A's, since I just want to flesh out one more, a couple of things. What do you want to do about the Coliseum? I mean, I think that here's, here's where, as I, as I talk with you and you know, I'm here in suburban Atlanta, like 50 miles out. Every municipality is looking at some type of expansion of sports because in that age, we have sports economic development, which is really capital T tourism, right? How do we fight back? How do we strike back? How do we come back into the game? I mean, I want to, I want to form a tax force, okay?
Well, let me, let me give a two-part answer to that. So in terms of the Coliseum property, which is the whole area there, we, we want that developed. Now, interestingly, the, as you know, Alameda County sold their, their half interest in the Coliseum properties to the A's for, in a game of sweetheart deal. Right. They, they charged a lot less than we think it's, it's worth. And they had no strings attached, you know, nothing about, we'll only sell you this if you stay in Oakland. We only sell you this if you build affordable housing. No string. It was, it was a ridiculously embarrassing deal for the county board supervisors to sell their half of the, their half of the interest in the, in the Coliseum properties to the A's for, for, for that, for the only 85 million, which is a pittance.
Yeah.
You know, it should have been at least 30, 40% more than that and with no strings attached. That was a mistake, an embarrassing mistake, and Oakland would not make that same mistake. But we did, we are providing an ENA, as you know, an ENA, a negotiating opportunity for the African-American Sports and Entertainment Group to, to help develop.
Yeah.
Of the, that property, which could, which I think more likely than not will involve tearing down the outdoor Coliseum completely. And, but, but they have to either work with the A's who now own it or have the A's be bought out by, have the A's be bought out in terms of that property and then have it, have another private entity own it instead. Or of course, the, I suppose the city could eminent, eminent domain it, but we don't have the money to pay for that. So. So, so we want it to be developed. It, it could be entertainment, a combination of entertainment, housing, both market rate and below market housing. It could be a smaller soccer stadium for the Oakland roots or any other Oakland soccer team that might come at some point in time. We want, I think, for now, we want to keep the indoor arena, which might be able to be used as a, for a WNBA team, as well as the, the concerts and special events that are already happening there. So there's an opportunity to use that facility, the, the, the area, the property for a number of things which could help, which could help, I don't want to overstate this, but which could help revitalize some of the, the economic activity and the stuff going on in, in that part of East Oakland. Now, I don't want to overstress that, that reality. I'm not going to try to make it sound better than it might be, but I think overall it could be very positive.
Question. How come, can't we do this where we actually form a plan for the Coliseum? We have the AASG there and then say, all right, just as, for example, Elizabeth Hollander did for the Harold Washington Library Center in Chicago, which comes to my mind because they said, okay, we're going to spend 140 million. Here's the preliminary plan and go from there, rather than what we've done, which has been so politically based that you had Coliseum City, you know, created by Steve Low, Bob Lusti and Harold and, and Frank Dobson, who's the architect, then Larry Retakes it, you know, makes it Coliseum City, but then it becomes a political football. Can't we get away from the political footballisms and some, what we used to do? You know, directed planning over the long term and we can call our shots and go back to calling our shots. And I'll be honest with you, you'll break somebody else's heart rather than they're breaking ours for, you know what I mean? Just be some, be some, be some assholes for a change. We're not assholes, man.
I, I think it's always been a better idea for the city, or any city for that matter, to say, this is what we want. This is pretty much, I mean, within, within parameters. This is what we want to happen at this property, you know? This is what we want to happen at this property and then go find a developer who's willing to do it.
Yeah.
I, I, that's always made more sense to me. And for some reason, most cities don't do that most hardly at all. They, 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 oh, here's private property, here's public property, you know, tell us what you want to do there and we'll give you some. We have some extremely broad parameters that don't really tell people anything or almost anything. And then, and then, you know, it's like, so we need to be, I think we need to be more, more selective as to what we say we want. Now, we do have a specific plan for the Coliseum, as you know. And that, that creates some parameters, but it's pretty, it's still pretty broad. The good thing is that the EIR is already done, you know? So, so you, you, almost anything you're going to, you're going to build there, you're probably covered with the, with the existing EIR with maybe a slight addendum later on. So, so that's a good thing. But, you know, we, we need, listen, it's not going to be easy for AASG who has the exclusive negotiating agreement right now to work with the A's or even by themselves to develop something and get the financing and have a, a real, you know, comprehensive. It's a big, it's a big set of properties. It's huge. And, and they want to do all these things there. Well, it's easy to, it's easy to write ideas on paper and have a glitzy kind of PowerPoint presentation. But how are you going to actually do it? I mean, you got to have money, you got to have financing, you got to have investors. You want to have, you want to have community benefits. That's going to cost some money. And so it's not an easy thing to do. Nobody should get, nobody should be too optimistic. But I think we have to try and push it forward. And if, if the AASG can't produce something that, you know, a path, a plan and a, and a timeline and a pathway that we think is viable after a couple of years, then maybe we need to look to, look, look to somebody else.
Have you been briefed by them lately?
Not lately, no.
Wow. When is the next briefing? Is there a schedule? I mean, I'd like to see a schedule of like where you're at.
Well, I think, I think they talk with our planning department regularly or, or, I'm sorry, economic development department regularly. But, but no, I, I don't, I don't know if they've talked to any of the council members recently. Although we will get that this year, certainly this year, because there'll have to be a check-in on that as required. But, but, you know, it doesn't, the, the council voted to give them the, the first dibs at making it work. They'll, they'll need to work with the A's or whoever the A's sell the property to if the A's don't keep it. And we'll see. There's, there's, there's consensus that we both want, we all want the Oakland roots to have a, a, a high quality place to play and that could be something that is built there. That's the soccer team. We also want a WNBA team. And we think the, the Coliseum and the city of Oakland is a great place to have a WNBA home team. And so we're very excited about that. And no one, no one disagrees with that idea. We just have to see how we can make it happen. And there has to be an ownership group that wants to do it.
Well, how about reviving the Oakland-Alameda County Sports Commission that I started in 2000, well, 1999 for the Super Bowl project? And then economic development was going to give me $80,000 to run it because they didn't think I was going to get us to the Super Bowl finals and I did. So they put it in there and then Jerry gets upset that I accused him of being racist in an email and then he fires me, which actually was against the law. Okay? So I'm the only person in Oakland's history to establish a sports commission. I'm not saying, oh, do it and then put me in charge. I'm saying, Dan, we don't have a sports commission. And I got also nationally, you know, registered everything. And all they had to do, anyone had to do is sit down and say, hey, Zeni, you did this. Leave us a blueprint, right? We've got nothing. So, and what we are is we have you guys as elected officials saying, okay, let's call the balls and strikes with respect to what we go after, rather than having a plan and then presenting the plan to you, right? With calculations as to how it worked, financial, demographic and everything like we used to do. And then spelling it out and then letting you guys make the decision, you know, rather than how we started to do it, which to me is just completely haphazard. Your thoughts? I'm frustrated.
I, I, you know, I haven't really thought about some kind of sports commission. I mean, we have lots of commissions in Oakland. This would, you, you, the way you presented it, you said it'd be a, a city hyphen county commission, joint commission.
The Oakland-Alameda County Sports Commission as a response to our need to give the NFL, this was in 1999, a bid because one people, Robert wanted to do it and, you know, it was a lot of political, right? I called Joe Brown, the NFL, who I had met when I was working for Elihu through Roger Goodell. And this goes back to 96. And I said, where are we? And he said, you're behind the eight ball. So that's where I created it. When you deal with sports leagues and organizations, you need a sports commission. These are nationally recognized. They're decades long. There's no excuse for Oakland not having one. Las Vegas just started there as a few years ago. I go on and on and on. It's like you're, some, some budget them so that the commission.
I, I don't know if Alameda County would be interested in that.
Well, here's the thing. It doesn't matter. My point is, Alameda County, we help Alameda County anyway. And Alameda County is only 17% of our tax increment budget, 17%. So we could have walked along and Howard Terminal cut them out and they would be begging to go with us on the 55 acres of land. We got to be assholes, Dan. Okay? It's not a matter of what somebody won't do. It's a matter of what we do. Okay? It's what we do, you and I, us. We're, we're, we're getting our lunch handed to us. It's embarrassing.
Yeah, well, you know, I, if somebody wants to put together a sports commission or if the mayor wants to talk with the board of supervisors or someone, I have no objection to it. You know, I haven't, like, the first time I've heard of that idea. So, but you know.
There are 221 sports events annually that we can bid for and it promotes our facilities. We have a convention center downtown. It's 150,000 square feet. I was proud of an idiot. It's still the same size, Dan.
Yeah.
We have no convention center, Dan.
Yeah, well, we, we get conventions there. We just don't have enough hotel rooms all the time.
But we don't build them. Every other cities have a plan. These are things we plan and we are in there. I'm going to say this again. We're butthole enough to make them happen.
No, we, we have been building and supporting more hotels. We have, we have a few, a few have been built. We had a plan, not just a plan, we had an agreement. LDDA, an agreement by the developer in writing to build a hotel literally right across the street from the Marriott, literally. And they, they built a residential tower on Clay Street and the other part of the property facing 11th Street was going to be a hotel. They backed out of that. They said they can't get the financing to make the hotel project work. So they sold it to Samuel Merritt University. And now Samuel Merritt University is building their new campus or going to build a new campus on that location. So we want hotels. We've been pushing those, planning for those. We're getting a few. It's helping. Our understanding is the convention center, while it's not huge like other cities are, we're, we're getting a lot of, you know, business. I mean, it's, you know, COVID was, was difficult, but now it's coming back. And so our convention center for the size it is, is getting a pretty, pretty good amount of business.
We have to look at and build bigger. Dan, better than anybody else, you can do this. Okay? You get behind something. That's why you're the best, one of the best council members ever had in our existence. Okay? You can get behind this because it's more than just sports. It's edifices that really allow us to express different aspects of our culture and our musicians and contractors and everything else. It's not about sports. Nothing wrong with sports, but it's more than that. It really is. Convention and visitors bureaus have committees, you know, part of them. So you can put in and visit Oakland, right? Any kind of way you want to do it. But we need to do something, Dan. I mean, I mean, it's nationally embarrassing to go through, we went through, it really is.
Yeah.
And I know you can, I know you can get involved in it. I know you can do it.
Listen, I, I'm all in favor of trying to expand our economic activity and through, including through conventions and whatever we need to do. I haven't seen anybody, you know, propose that we kind of build a new convention center or expand the one that exists there.
I'm proposing. I'll, I'll light the fire. I'm just one guy.
The question would be then, to get a, to get a meaningfully larger convention center, not just a tiny bit larger, but something that makes sense to do, do you have to do a tear down and rebuild or can you actually expand what's there? And if so, how do you do that? So.
I think we can expand what's there. I think we need to be creative about it. That's, that's, my mind explodes with some ideas that are going to take us in another direction. But I love my city. You know, I just, I just feel like we need to be bulldogs about our city, not just happy with what we have, but also saying, hey, you know, we've got some great people here, yourself included. And we all need to do what we used to do, like with Celebrate Oakland, when the Haas family owned the A's. Remember all those great times, right? All that. And build. We can do it, Dan. I know we can. I know we can. And, folks, get this man elected. And if, if, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, get this guy elected.
Let me, let me just say a little, little bit about, you know, I, I, I've been, I'm in my third term as a city council member and, and I'm looking to move on to the state senate and really be able to help Oakland and the entire East Bay and the entire state get, using my skills. And I, I know that being a state legislator, it's not about, it's not like, it's not a high profile position like governor or, or a member of Congress or a big city mayor. It, the real work, being a state legislator in California is the, the nitty gritty, often behind the scenes, tedious work on very complex policy issues. And that's the kind of work that I'm really good at. If you look at my record in, in Oakland, working on complex legislation and being able to get ordinances passed that, that have a lot of controversy and be able to put together coalitions. If you look at my record prior to me being a city council member, when I worked for the Union of Concerned Scientists and other organizations in Sacramento, commuting up to Sacramento, craft, crafting legislation, negotiating amendments, building coalitions, doing the entire soup to nuts process for quite a long time at the state level. I have tremendous experience that I think will be valuable, whether it's on environmental, clean energy issues, affordable housing, public education and on and on and on. So I'm looking forward to serving the people of the East Bay in the state legislature. If anybody has any questions, go to dan kalb.net and you can get more information there. And I hope to have people's support.
I'm putting it right here, dot net. And it'll appear right here, folks. There it is, dan kalb.net. Get some quick comments here. Edward Scissorhands says, MLB team seeing San Francisco? Yeah, she's talking about the hotel situation. Went to get them in Oakland. You know, Steve says Oakland has lost an NHL team, NFL team, but not, not once, but twice, NBA team and now an NFL. NBA team and now an MLB team. Absolutely ridiculous.
Do we have an NHL team?
I think he was referring, a long time ago, we actually did. It was the Oakland Seals, I think it was. It was a long time ago. I think he was referring to that at brief time. Sir Chai says, Dan, can, can Howard Terminal lure an NFL team to Oakland?
No, you can't build a football stadium at Howard Terminal, but you could build a new football stadium at the Coliseum site and I knew, a new one, not an, not an old one, a new one. But I don't know if NFL is going to do much, much expansion anytime soon.
Well, I, I mentioned it to Goodell when some of the AASG D laughed at me. So that means, that means two things. A, right now, no. B, keep talking to me, Zinni. The laughter will turn into a yeah, because I know Roger. So then he says, I need to make major changes and take the city in a better direction, new direction. Sir Chai says, I'll vote for Dan Calb. There you go, Dan. You got a, got a, got a supporter. Dankeilb.net and I'm talking about the Seals, absolutely. And it's Dan, your, your, your opportunity to add anything else about where we're at and where.
I think, you know, I think on one hand, we all want to feel, we all want to have, you know, sports teams to root for and to feel it's, it's part of a, it's an intangible benefit to the city and to the people of the city, not just the city, but it's an intangible plus, an intangible benefit to people in a city and the, and in the suburbs and who live nearby. That, that's, that's mostly what the, what the excitement has always been among fans and, and near fans, you know, if you, if you will. And so that, that's, that we can't discount that. That's a real thing and people want to feel a sense of excitement, pride, whatever you want to call it. The, the potential economic benefit, net benefit of having a, a major league sports team. You know, a lot of people feel, have different views on that, you know, is it, is it going to be a, a big economic benefit? An intermittent economic benefit or wash, you know, this, hard to know. It's maybe a slight benefit, but not a big one. So, you know, and so you have to be careful how much money you put into it. You know, that's a, that's a question, but I, you know, we all want sports teams. I, I'm a big sports fan, you know? I remember as a kid, I played basketball, played Little League.
Coliseum a bunch of times.
I, I've been to the Coliseum. I, I remember I, I remember one of my first games at the Coliseum was when I moved up here in 1980. A long time ago, when it was the A's versus the Cleveland Indians. I think the A's lost that game, but what I liked it was like the music that, that, that was played at the Coliseum for the A's was different than any other baseball team that I've ever been to. I mean, like you had like Motown people dancing in the aisles. It was like, it was fun. It was fun. And we're, and then if you go to like the Dodgers or even the Giants, it's like, yeah, it's music, but it's not, it's not that same excitement. And that was a long time ago and it's, the same goes for now. And so, but, but you know, they're, they're making their bed and they want to go sleep in Las Vegas and, and you know, we can't stop them doing that. Again, you know, it's up to the people of Las Vegas. They want to take a deal that they think is good and it's hard to say. That's up to them. But so, you know, we're trying to do what we can. And meanwhile, I think we have a lot of challenges in our state that we have to work on, whether it's, you know, climate justice and clean energy, whether it's helping our public education system, including community colleges and higher education. And I've, I've worked on those issues. Affordable housing is the thing, something I've been very passionate about for many, many years, many decades really. And on and on and on. So there's a lot of things we have to work on and I want to get up there and get my hands dirty once again and do that work in Sacramento.
I'll show you this real quick. This is Google Trends search. This is the lifetime of Google Trends, Dan. And what it does is that it shows from 2004 on the extreme left all the way till now. If you extrapolate that Oakland has actually gone down and the, what, right here where, where I'm circling is in 2019, last year, the Raiders, Warriors were in the NBA finals and we've had a decline. Imagine what happens five years now when it becomes the Las Vegas Athletics. So my point is this is, this is the importance of sports in, to Oakland. It is communicated our importance to the world in a way that we've never had before. Now we've, we've lost it. That's $100 million a year in free money. That's what, that's the movie we have to spend, you know, to get that kind of look without having a sports team that has Oakland in it. Even the Warriors, you know, they played in Oakland, so we enjoyed it because they played in Oakland, Oracle Arena in Oakland, right? We've blown all that away. That's what, that's, that's what it's, that's what, when economists don't factor that in, because they think in the 20th century.
Yeah.
You know, but there's something I want you to consider, you know? A different question from a different part. What do we do about the rising tide of antisemitism? I am really concerned about what is going on.
Yeah. Well, I, I, thank you for that question and I, I, I'm Jewish, as you know, and.
So it's Jewish. So, you know.
That's right. There you go. And so I, I've, you know, I, while, while there's always been antisemitism in, in the United States and all around the world for that matter, in a big way, I've noticed it more, at least in California, maybe other states as well, in the past five or six years, more than, more than I've seen previous to that. Now, I don't know if the part of that is, is, you know, people feel more comfortable being antisemitic because of Trump or if it's other reasons. Maybe it's not related to Trump at all. I don't know. But, but nevertheless, I've seen a lot of that. And so, you know, I'm, I've always been, I've always stood up very firm against all types of hate and bigotry, including antisemitism. But whether it's racism or Islamophobia or, or homophobia, whatever it is, you know. I'm sorry?
Or transphobia.
Yeah, transphobia, absolutely. The bigotry and hate and, and sad discomfort that people have because someone else is different than them. You know, it's, it's, it's how you're brought up. I mean, you're not, you're not born like that. No one's born like that. So that means it's how you're up. And so at some point we have to break that cycle. It's not easy. I mean, it's, it's nothing new. It's not easy. But I will, you know, stand up firmly and stand up and for, whether it's the AAPI community, African American community, LGBTQ, Jewish community, Latino, you name it. Whether, if there is hate, antisemitism, racism, bigotry, whatever it may be, if it's going to rear its ugly head somewhere where I am or near where I am, or somewhere that, that covers an area that I have to pay attention to or do pay attention to, I will be there fighting back. And that's how I've always been.
Another question too, this is about crime. We've been beset by crime. I'm, I'm afraid to come back home. And I am because the last time I did, my, my car was, I had a car smashed, car smashed into and I thought, what the heck? On front of the alley, right? And so I actually miss Saigon, but when are we going to do something like, for example, implement AB464 Mullen, which would allow us to start a tax increment financing zone or zones and get that money, you know, to businesses that have suffered from the pandemic so they can protect themselves as one example. You know, our mutual friend, Barbara, Barbie Lopez marched that through the legislature, got it passed. Where are we? What's, what, what should we do? You know?
Yeah, I, it's a good question. You know, I just actually literally, yeah, yesterday I sent out a, you know, two pager about public safety in Oakland and what I think we need to do. You got that? Okay. So it's on my city, it's on my city hall website if anybody wants it. You know, again, we could all do the things we think we could do or that we have money to do. And they're all, and they're, you know, they're more or less all good ideas, but they're no guarantees. The problem is that, you know, crime, including violent crimes, seriously, serious violent crime, you know, there's all sorts of reasons these things happen. And it's not, it's not always easy to stop those reasons from being, from coming into play like that. And so we, we have to investigate the serious and violent crimes and catch the perpetrators with the evidence that we could get and gather. We have to make sure people are held accountable and that there are consequences to committing these crimes, especially if they're repeat offenders. Absolutely. And, and we have to have programs that reduce the likelihood that they'll happen in the future because of the prevention efforts that, that we have, whether it's job readiness or, or angry, all sorts of different reentry kind of services or other kinds of prevention programs and strategies, they, they work to some extent and that they're important. But again, there are no guarantees. It's really, you know, a lot of it has to do with the family and, and you know, the family of how you're brought up or who you interact with or who you are able to, for better or worse, interact, you know, kind of hook up, hook up with. It's, it's a, it's a multifaceted challenge. I mean, academics and experts on the ground have looked at this, these issues for decades in all sorts of places. And nobody has a great answer. Oh, if you do X and Y, you're going to reduce crime. A lot of people don't really know. And so, you know, and so we try to do a whole myriad of things that we feel are comprehensive in nature. And that's absolutely critical if you want to reduce crime. And so, yeah. So that's, that's where we're working on those things. We will continue to work on things because those are, you know, a top priority and we'll see what we get done.
Jay Belden asked a question. He says, give us an example of your experience with more, with of more antisemitism, your experience, Mr. Calvin, ask him something. I'm going to say something real quick on that question, Jay. You probably didn't mean this that way. And if we're talking face to face, I think you're phrased it differently, but I consider that question assaulting. And the reason I do is this. It's like, you should be able to recognize that yourself. I mean, there's two ways I can take that. I can take it that way or I can take it where you're saying, hey, just for the viewers, tell them what, what goes on because I know it when I see it. I know when I experience it, Dan does, and Jay, I think you do too. What do you say?
I think all, all, all I meant to say, and I think this is understood, is that we've, we, we see incidents in the Bay Area, for example, in the Bay Area of, of the kind of, you know, hate, whether it's antisemitic hate or other kinds of hate, let's talk about antisemitism. We see that more often over the past six years than, than the pre, in the previous 10 years. I mean, and so, and I don't know why, if, I don't know, is it that more people who have that hate inside them feel more comfortable? You know, in spewing out things in, you know, drawing swastikas in places or, or punching someone because they're Jewish, which has happened more than one occasion, a lot, a number of times, or, or handing out, you know, blatantly, you know, antisemitic flyers around different communities, which has happened throughout the Bay Area and throughout the country for that matter. Shootings that have, you know, happened, you know, in, in various Jewish places of Jewish worship or Jewish congregants. So there, there have been always, and these, these number of these things have happened, seemed to have gone up in the past five to six years. And I can't tell you why, but it's not a good thing. And, and so we have to do what we can to, you know, communities have to support each other. You know, if one community is attacked, we should all support that community, whatever community it is. And so I've always been there for other communities and I know many other communities have been there for, for us and the Jewish community when we need it. And, and I think we have to work together.
Didn't we used to have a hate crime hotline? Didn't Russo start that in 2000?
I'm not sure we have a hate crime hotline, but you can report hate crimes in Oakland. No question about that. We all, we have, we have Interfaith Council of Alameda County that is trying to call attention to these things and do what we can. So, you know, there are efforts, I think. There are a lot of NGOs that work together with other NGOs of different communities. And that's, that's a very important effort to support each other. So, you know, there's always going to be a few people out there, maybe, maybe more than a few, who spew out the sad, disturbing, sick, you know, hatred of one community or another, or in some people, they hate, they hate everybody who's not like them.
Yeah, I don't know why people who do that. My question is, why don't these folks like to have fun? And, you know, and that can't be fun for anybody. Anybody does that, considering the consequence of, of it, if they consider that fun, they're nuts, you know?
You know, I'm not a psychologist, but some of them may have some serious mental challenges. I, I don't know. But, you know, again, it's, it's part, part of it is how you're brought up and, you know, who you, you know, who you interact with and who you're introduced to and, and, you know, I, I, I don't want to blame everything on the parents or parents. Cause, cause, you know, bringing up a child is challenging and sometimes you have single parent households and sometimes you can't control the, the outside environment that, that the child has been growing up in. So I'm not blaming all parents for everything that's bad. But, but, you know, the family is a factor in, in this. And if the family or the parent or parents can do things to help stem the tide of these, of this negativity, that, that's a good thing.
So where do you see us in five years? A new NFL team, NBA team?
I'd love to see a WNBA team here. And I think, I think that's possible if, if I think there's a lot of movement, a lot of momentum there, that could happen. I'd like, for all I know, the, the Oakland Roots, the soccer team might eventually be able to move up to the, the major league soccer league. They're, they're in that secondary league right now, which is still a big deal and people love the Roots. But even if they stayed in the league they're in now, you know, people love them. They're great. And, and so they should have a home that they could call their own.
Why can't we put them in the stadium? Because that, that place they want where Malibu golfers games, that's a flood plain. I'm telling, I told Lena, Linda, Linda the other day, I said, did you analyze for that? She actually hadn't. I was floored, man. I was like, seriously?
Yeah, the old go kart place.
Yeah. Zach Lawson will tell you all about C. Reloise. He's our mutual friend. He'd have a baby if he knew that was happening.
Yeah. Well, I, it's, yeah. There, there could be requirements as to how you build up and, and put something in, in, but yeah. Yeah. And now, you know, I mean, again, a lot of people are concerned about the other side of the 880 closer to the bay. People are thinking about building a lot more there. And I say, well, wait a minute, let's, let's look at the future, see what makes sense and what doesn't. You know, there, we have to be careful what we do. I mean, yeah. So anyway, a lot, a lot of, a lot of decisions to make.
We need to have a big, like almost a constitutional committee. Remember Oakland sharing the vision. We need to do that all over again. Dan, I don't want, I'm about to tax your time. Sorry about that.
No problem. Well, thanks, Zinni. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. Hey, Dan, Oppenheimer. I'm excited for the movie. I bet you are too.
I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing that. Yeah.
Yeah. See it at the Grand Lake. Alan Machon's going to get it.
Cool.
All right. Hey, stick around in the background down. I'll, I'll close you out. Everybody, thank you so much, so much for joining us. I didn't get to all your questions. Wanted to make sure I gave the council member and our future state senator as much time as he could to, to address everything. Dan, stick around in the background. Folks, thank you very much. Subscribe to Zinni62, bookmark oaklenewsnowblog.com, zinni62.com. And that ends this broadcast. Dan, you have to push a button. I got.